Okay, well I got four blocks, so why don't we go ahead and get it, Bruce? If you would please, can you leave everybody, can you leave? Put legs, please.
I'll do that. My pledge allegiance to the light of the United States of America, in two republics, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. I apologize for what confusion we may have today, but Dan's sick. Normally Dan would be there and I wouldn't have to, to stick in here like this, but he's, he is under the weather. Got a back cough and he thought it best he not be there, so the law allows us to do a quorum by Zoom so long as I can see and you can, you can see and hear me directly. And I can see you and hear you directly, which is what Zoom is all about, so we are good to go. So we'll go ahead and get started. The minutes for January 3rd, I heard Bruce just say we're gonna have to hold those off for next meeting because I, I can't approve those because I was not at that meeting, so we'll hold those off. But you have payroll amount of $213,122.18.
And I don't know if you heard that Jim earlier, Laura said that's quite a bit higher due to the ARP payments that we made through payroll that we had approved. Yep, so that's why that's higher. So I make a motion, we approve payroll in the amount of $213,122.18.
And I would second that, all in favor, say aye. All right, and we have paid link, did we see your payroll claims till next time? So we have four hands, I checked the request. One to Micah Beeks-Johnson for $75, what is that for Laura?
That's for the contract of the health, the health board.
Instructor fees for EMT meeting.
Gotcha, okay. All right, then we have Brown's free vintage, that's the gentleman who's working on the courthouse doors. This is for the south side doors, they are finished and, and reinstalled. IAC of $500, what is that for?
That's for the commissioners' annual fee for the Indiana County Association.
Okay, and then the one that's, we had a mistake there on the agenda. This actually is another payment of $796.40 to alcohol monitoring and that's part of the probation department.
That's correct.
So I think we can, um, give a motion for, to do the out of, anti-check.
Yep, I'll make a motion that we approve the four anti-checks that you just mentioned.
And I would second that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, so we have a contract with Micah Beeks-Johnson, so we have a contract to sign, approve to sign for that $75?
Yes, I do have.
It look okay to you Bruce?
Hold on Jim, I gotta sign something here real quick.
Yeah, is Nick with it?
Nick is, sitting in here, yes. Have you got that contract Nick?
Which contractor was it?
Michael Beeks-Johnson.
The EMS.
Oh, that's the template, they had emailed that to me.
Yeah, the template and one for Nicole.
Yeah, no, it's fine, I only got the first page, but they had emailed it to me previously and I didn't have any issues with it.
Okay, then I'd make a motion that we approve the contract with EMT, our relationship.
And I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, hold on just a sec, hold on just a second Jim. Laura or Nick? Jim's name's on here.
For the contract?
Can I sign?
I would just cross off his name, write your name in and sign as you, is what I would do. And then like initial date next to the change or whatever.
Your name was on these.
Gotcha.
These contract, the independent contract thing, so.
Gotcha.
For us to get them signed, Laura get them to wherever they need to be, we're gonna just.
Gotcha, there's, there's nothing that, either of you can't sign that I signed. We all equal as commissioners, the only thing I ask about with the internet stuff is just keep it consistent so it's all going on the same.
Right, yeah, I agree, yeah, the format wants to, we want it to look the same, so.
Yep, yep. I'm special, only in my heart Bruce, only in my mind am I special.
Well, you're special in other ways Jim.
Well, okay then, while we got that, that settled.
Okay, we got those signed, we're ready to move on.
All right, next we had a grievance to us from Mecca about a road closure. Can you explain to me what that is, make sure?
I had a question about that Jim, I'm not sure, is this road within the town limits or outside of the town limits for Mecca?
They've got a map right here, I got the.
Oh, there is a map, okay.
Let me give you the whole nine yards.
Because if it's within town limits, they would have to do that themselves at the town board.
Mm-hmm, so county board signed up on it.
Alright, so they wouldn't need our approval if it's within the town.
Is it the closure of road permanently?
Pam's sitting in here, I don't know if she knows anything or not. Pam, do you know?
The only thing I know is they are getting ready, they got a grant to put a park in where the old elevator used to be. So I'm not sure if they're not maybe closing that part of that, or I, I really don't know for sure. But I do know that they're supposed to start work on that in February.
Park boundary line.
Is that obviously all within corporation limits or could it's part of a B county?
I think it's all in the town.
Then I would agree with Nick that we don't have to do anything with it yet.
I mean, to the extent we find out it's outside of the town, I guess you guys could approve it, but you guys aren't the responsible legislative body to be, or executive body to be able to close within the town of incorporated.
And we can, we can agree with their closing it, we just don't have any jurisdiction, so would it save time for them maybe for us to go ahead and approve it? And, and just in case there any part of it was county?
I mean, I'm just not seeing anything here where they actually went through any process for them because they have to hold a meeting in front of the public and let people be heard.
They're not very fierce about that kind of stuff.
You know, I do have.
You don't say any kind of meeting?
Yeah, that Tom has signed.
Did they have a public meeting though?
That, I don't know much about that.
She did, in the email we can contact that lady on there if we had questions because.
Kristy Gerald?
Yeah, she said we can call her during the meeting and talk to her about it. They were supposed to bring it to us last year and didn't. And I know their attorney said that you guys need to see it or something.
I think she's their grant writer and I believe Mary Pierce is their attorney or she is.
I mean, if you guys are okay, I can reach out to Mary and if, I mean. You need to sign something.
Could we just make a motion to, to express our agreement with the idea of closing that road should part of it be in the county, although I is, we are in support of what efforts Mecca is making?
Yeah, that, that's fine, I mean, there's a process you have to go through to close a road though and, you know, they certainly haven't met it from the county standpoint as far as advertising.
My question, are they closing it permanently or just for repair?
It reads like permanently for the purpose of a park.
Yes, yeah, the way it kinda looks is it says that the road is currently only used by the town to access a town-owned building and that it, it was a stone road that's overgrown with grass and is used infrequently.
There's a little road that goes into where they're putting that park, maybe that's what they're talking about.
I think that's what it is, that little road going into the, where the park's gonna be.
That's where the old elevator used to sit, and so I'm sure there was a road back in there.
But is that inside the town limits?
Yes, yes.
So does the town have to do one of those vacay down things?
Yeah, they're gonna have to do that with their town and public, and give notice and all that and I don't see any road where there's notice or anything, but the county wouldn't be the appropriate jurisdiction for that anyway. It'd be the town, because they're incorporated.
I would agree with that, Nick, if you don't mind, you might reach out to, to Mary and just make sure that's how it is.
Yeah, I mean, there may be something here that she can, you know, having more knowledge of it can educate me as to why it would come to us, but based on what I'm seeing.
We can deal with it next time if that should require something.
Okay.
That okay with you Bruce?
Yes.
Okay. Then we have a resolution from the Walbush River Heritage, I do not have that in front of me?
That is just a normal resolution that they have when they want to make, for your commissioners' appointments.
And our appointments remain the same, right Penny Cox?
Yeah.
Yes.
Phil Cox?
Penny and Joe, I meant if I remember right.
Penny and Phil, Penny Cox and Phil Cox was a, was a.
That is, that is correct.
So we have a resolution.
Is that right Laura?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, Penny Cox is the, the representative and Phil Cox is the alternate. So do we, we need a resolution number for that?
Yeah, she's already got it, it's 2022-02. So I'll make a motion that we approve resolution 2022-02 which is just confirming our participation in Walbush River Heritage Corridor Commission and authorizing that we have given Penny Cox the ability to speak on our behalf.
And I would second that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Laura, you wanna fill out all these blanks?
Yes, I'll fill out the blanks if he's assigned them. Then I can get that mailed out to them tomorrow.
They don't have counsel, is what I'm being told, so if anybody has Mr. Fortner's number, I can reach out to him if he'd like.
I do have, I do have.
So that, that might be part of what's going on then, and maybe I can kinda help him along a little bit.
Okay, I'll send that to you Nick.
Thanks Jim.
He's got it to you, he's a tax collector.
Okay, yeah, I, I think they may just be confused with the statute possibly, but.
Okay, Laura, what's the correction on the ordinance 2021-11?
Well, the councilman had also used that, um, ordinance number 2021-11. So since the council used it and the commissioners used it first, then I would like to have that ordinance number changed to 2020, 2021-15 for the Veterans Home Rule Fund that we had passed.
Nick, can we just do that by motion?
Yeah, but, so we passed it first and then they passed one second?
Yes.
What's the second number?
But there's second, but when they pass theirs, they've got a 2021-11A and a B joint with county, with the commissioners and the council.
So this would be easier to clean up.
All right, then I'd, I'd make the motion that we correct ordinance 2021-11 to rename it ordinance 2021-15.
And Jim, I, I'd say maybe just so it's real clean, maybe I, I amend that ordinance a little bit to put some language in indicating what's happened. But you guys can go ahead and pass it and just sign it at the next meeting.
Okay.
And I'll put some language amending it, just so it's clear, like this is what happened, this is why the number changed and that might be a little better.
All right.
In case we have questions later. So that's 15, is that right?
Yes, that is correct.
2022 or 21-11.
Change orders 2021-11 to ordinance 2021-15 and ask the attorney to include some language explaining the, the reason for the change of number.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, appointment list, I've got that with me here Bruce, have you had a chance to look at that?
Yeah, I looked through it and I don't see anything that, that we did, we only did a couple things basically, and so.
Yes. I didn't see anything else that changed in 2021, so all these are good through 2022, that I see anyway. So you, are you good with the list then as it is?
So yeah, I, I, again, I don't, I don't see anything that we did, uh, talk about a couple months ago or, you know, that meeting we were talking, so I'll make a motion that we'll just go, I don't know what Laura needs for sure. Do you just want something in the minutes?
Yeah, just something in the minutes so I can put this whole schedule.
That the schedule is for, as we have mentioned it, okay.
Correct.
Well, I'll just make a motion that the schedule of appointments that we were given by the county auditor does reflect what we appointed last November, I think it was, or early December, and she can then post it as a public record.
Okay, hang on, I'm just checking one thing here, step me up, yeah, okay. Yes, I, I would be with that, I second that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Hang on, I've got my paper sorted out here. All right, then we have an alcohol appointment letter?
Right, this is a letter that we have the commissioners to sign each year when they do the appointment of the alcohol.
We made no changes on that board, is that correct?
That is correct.
Then I, I make the motion then that we approve the alcohol board as presented?
Okay, yeah, I don't have that in front of me, but she's got, she's got the original right here, so.
Just gets signed and then goes to the clerk's office.
Okay, so I, I'll second your motion Jim.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And you can sign that Bruce?
Yes, I'm gonna sign it here.
All right.
Okay, I think we're good.
We have an Hamilton Center report, 13-page documents sent out to us, so we can review that on our time. We were also sent the transient merchant license to see for any changes we would like and they've already marked that the date would be changed at the top, the last they can care of. As far as I know.
Then the date at the bottom will be changed to 2022 and then, are you gonna put the word replacement in there?
Yes, because that confused the public.
Okay.
Yep, I would need to, yep, okay.
Other than that, I don't, I don't recall anything we talked about as far as needing to change anything else from the festival.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion, yeah, I'll make a motion we approve the TML license for 2022.
And I would second that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Then we have the, just the agenda from the Walbush River Heritage. Now, we have a question about COVID employees, we, we haven't addressed this yet. I'm going back and forth on this a number of times, I know we have a county employee who was sick with COVID and the question was, does that person continue to get paid regular pay even though they are unable to work? We have done that in the past, my, my personal belief is that at some point this has to, has to, to end. We don't know if this person had, had taken advantage of the opportunities to get vaccinated or not. Um, but as far as my thinking, and Nick you need to, to chime in on this as well as Bruce, um, we are still in that state of emergency, the governor has not lifted that and we have paid for people who were sick with COVID in the past who were county employees, even though we don't know where it came from. We have not changed that yet as far as I know, Bruce, what do you think?
Yeah, I don't even know Nick, if you may help, did we even change the handbook originally when this whole thing started or did we just?
It was by, there was a, either executive order from the governor or something that came down as a mandate from the higher government that said that you must do this as an act or something they enacted. But my understanding is that may have expired, so if that's the case, then we're just under our normal sick time leave policy. Uh, but it's something I'm gonna have to research because I, I don't, I didn't stay abreast on the COVID as far as, there were so many orders that came down that, I mean. But if that order has expired, then they're just subject to the handbook unless you guys vote to make an exception in some manner, so.
That, that would be my position, that if you could check and see that has expired, if that is still in force, then of course we have, we should pay that. But if that has expired and it's just a normal sickness now, then I would say that we need to go back to our normal, normal way of doing things. Bruce, what do you think?
I, I definitely don't wanna downplay COVID because it has been a, a serious issue and it's still a serious issue. But if we don't have, um, you know, any, as you said, the executive order that mandates it, I mean, I don't know how you could treat one sickness any different than another, okay, because.
I agree.
I, I mean, is cancer worse than COVID, is COVID worse than cancer? Uh, and if somebody gets cancer and they have to be off for a month, we don't give them any special exceptions, like, well, you can have regular pay, they don't have to use sick time. Or, you know, the flu, or, or just go on and on and on, there's all kinds of sicknesses that employees get. And, and unfortunately, it looks like this COVID is kinda the new normal. And it'll, it'll, may never go away, and, and how long are we gonna continue? So, and, and I think once Nick finds out for sure whether that still applies or not, if it doesn't, then I would say we go back to just our normal handbook policy of sick time.
And I would agree with that, and I don't think we have to make any change on that, because we only changed it because we were told to by the state. And if we're no longer told by the state that we have to do that, then, then nothing changes for us, is that correct Nick?
Yeah, it was a mandate, it's just, I can't remember if it was from the state or if it was from a federal agency. Uh, my memory's kinda fuzzy on that, but it was mandated by somebody higher up than us as far as how that works. So we didn't have to make a change because that law trumps our law.
Right, so I think, I think Bruce, you're exactly right, if, if it's still mandated that we shall pay that on a, on a COVID diagnosis, then we will, but if it is no longer mandated, then we won't? Are you there, do you agree with it?
Yes, I'm okay with that.
All right, um, so Nick's gonna find out about that for us, thanks Nick.
No problem.
Um, all right, I don't have any other new business that I'm aware of, Bruce, do you have any new business?
I don't, I don't have any business per se, but Jim, I just wanted to, I emailed you about this the other day and I just wanted to at least, if possible, just kinda have something in, in the minutes that our former attorney here for the commissioners, served for many, many, many years, recently passed away and, and I just felt like maybe just take a moment here and just acknowledge that John's service for, for us as commissioners and just remember his family as they go through a tough time with them passing. So I just thought we'd put that in the minutes and we just appreciate John's service for all the years that he was county attorney.
And on that, on that line too, he will be noted on the, the, the plaque that we agreed to a year ago to put in the courthouse for the renovation of the clock tower, John was county attorney at the time we did all that. We need to make sure that we include him on that, on that listing as well when we get that done. I need to pursue that and get that accomplished. Okay, um, I don't have any old business, so departments, the sheriff's there.
Yep, the only old business, I don't know if, we got those resolutions, do we wanna put that in the old business or?
Yes, yeah, 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 that's right, you're right, I, I can't be the one by that. What we have is, we, we had to change the resolutions dealing with the, um, companies who were seeking, uh, grants from the Next Connection, um, grant program from the state for getting, um, broadband installed in the county, fiber, and that would be with Bloomingdale and with, um, Joint at the moment, and so we had to, uh, change the resolutions. And so we had the new resolutions in front of us to approve today, so they can be included. And Nick, have you had a chance to look at those, thank you Pam, because the council's already approved those, correct?
Yes, I, I reviewed those, there's also gonna be memorandum, memorandum of understanding to follow too, but that hasn't been completed as of yet to my knowledge.
Well, the new numbers of the new resolution now, do we, Nick, do we just amend the old ones or do we make these so they supersede the other previous resolution, how do we do that?
Their number A and B.
I would probably use them as an amendment to them, that way it cleans up our record a little bit.
I don't know the numbers of the previous ones.
It looks like 12A and B.
Well, the new number, I would say the old number was 2112, does that sound right?
Uh, so there's a number wrong in there?
This says 12B and 12A.
It could be, I don't have it here in front of me, I canceled both.
I assume the original resolution was 2021-12 and this is A and B.
Did we get to the point where we signed resolutions for them or were they not, not agreed upon?
I, I'm not sure Jim, I know I, I drafted them, but I can't remember what was signed.
I don't, I'm not so sure that we actually signed them and voted on them. So why don't we pass these contingent upon no previous existing resolutions that if we, is that too cumbersome Nick? I just know that you can get this in.
I would just pass them as if it's a brand-new resolution, there was no prior one. And if there is a prior one, it's rescinded based upon our limits. It's probably how I'd motion that.
Then I make the motion that we would adopt two resolutions. A resolution 2021-12-A and resolution 2021-12-B dealing with Bloomingdale Home Telephone Company and Joint, um, in the install and grant request for broadband in the county.
And I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I have already signed those and left them on the table there contingent upon our approval in this meeting. Now that they've been approved, we need Laura to attest to those and then we can get those to Alice there and then she can do what needs to be done with them.
Laura, and just make sure in your notes you indicated if there was a prior resolution passed, it's hereby rescinded. That's probably the only way to clean that up, I would say. My guess is, it was the 2021-11 because.
That's what I thought it was.
So I think the 12 at the top's in here, would be my guess, but I, I don't know. Because that kinda lines up with what we just did with the 2121-15.
But I can't swear to it until, because I've got all this left courthouse.
But this'd clean it up anyway, in case that's the case, but. I think the prior resolution was a resolution addressed at just broadband providers in general, not at specific broadband providers and this one's split into specific providers.
Does the date even need to be changed to 2022?
Uh, yeah, I would pass it 2022 as of today's date with today's ord, or resolution numbers, how I would do it.
Well, the council's already proved its problem, they've already signed.
How do they have it? A and B?
Yes, they have A and B, they have 21-12, they have A and B.
We got, we need to pass it how they've passed it then I guess, and just, just in terms of.
That was my motion to pass it as, as they signed it, so they proved that.
I would say, I bet they're off though, I think it's supposed to be, um, 11A and B, not 12, but that's my guess. So, I, I don't, I don't have any way of knowing what that was.
Right.
I would assume that they did it accurately, but if they didn't, then I'd go with 11.
Well, that was my motion, Bruce seconded, did we vote on that Bruce?
I don't know, but go ahead and let us vote again.
Okay, it's been moved to second to approve those resolutions that's presented, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, now that we've approved it, now Laura can attest, so the documents are there, they can be attested.
Yep.
And then we're just saying that we're rescinding whatever the prior resolution was from 2021.
Okay, um, is Justin there today?
Um, Jason text messaged me and said he's not gonna be able to make it, something came up. He was gonna attend on behalf of the sheriff's department.
Okay, then we have Randy.
Yes, Randy is here. Good Randy?
Yeah.
We got a pretty nice day up here Jim, so not what you got down there, but he's in the 40s, he's in the 40s today, so Randy probably got some things done.
Okay.
You have your jacket on down there, right Jim?
Yeah. I got the air conditioning on, did I tell you anything?
Yeah, tells me retirement's not too bad.
Yeah, sure.
I have the truck beds, looked over them.
Yep.
And the complete truck, including the bed. the complete truck, including the bed, plow and sander, and the warranties we generally get, engine warranty, after treatment warranty, AC and heater warranty, I didn't get to towing. But that comes to one hundred ninety three thousand two hundred and forty four dollars and sixty eight cents for the Kenworth truck. Although the Kenworth truck didn't have any delivery date at all on it, but I know he told me it wouldn't, he couldn't order any this year.
Right.
It'd be next year before you order. And then also wasn't a bid ninety five four on it either, so still have those complete.
Yeah, and it wasn't in any of my, I did double check that, I didn't have any of this stuff either, so.
I think that one is by the wayside.
Yeah.
So that leaves the Volvo, it's a little higher. Total for the truck, plow, sander, and the body and hydraulics is one hundred ninety three thousand seven hundred ninety six dollars and sixty eight cents. Then with the warranties, the engine warranties, twenty five forty two, the chassis warranty is forty ninety five, and I might add, and that chassis almost includes everything on that truck two hundred and fifty, or sixty thousand miles or five years, so that brings the total up to two hundred thousand four hundred and thirty three dollars and sixty eight cents. They're up quite a little bit, much more than the last one. And his delivery is either the last quarter of twenty two, or the first quarter of twenty three. So my recommendation would be
Well, I was gonna say, you, we only have one option.
Yeah.
Or not even order a truck at all, so, I guess, yeah, maybe a little bit more, but if you need a truck, and we need to get one ordered, we don't have any other option but to go with the Volvo, spend a little bit more than
I think last, the last truck was a hundred and seventy something, I think it was.
So his recommendation, I don't know if you're Jim, but his recommendation is go ahead and go with the Volvo and, and because the other bid is invalid due to the Form ninety five issue, so I'll make a motion that we allow Randy to go ahead and purchase the truck that we received it on from the Volvo, that was the Volvo truck that he received.
I would second that, all in favor say aye.
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 Thank you. Not the Communities Crossing Grant we're asking for? Can you read that, Jim?
The whole is up to me too.
Yeah.
Laura?
Bruce, you're gonna correct the portion on that with Cindy?
Yeah, with Ferndale Road.
Ferndale Road.
Yeah, she said.
And make sure we don't make sure we don't include the part that's at eight, eight p.m. or eight.
He said he's already talked to Cindy, so.
I left her a message, she didn't answer it.
Good.
I'll call her back tomorrow and be sure she got it. First road is one thousand east, that's down between seven twenty south and Ferndale Road, although the map, seven twenty is called Green Castle Road on the state's map, and Ferndale Road's called New Discovery Road. We've got that listed in there, so that won't be confused. That one come in at four hundred and fifty seven thousand two hundred and eighteen dollars and forty cents. And the next one is seven twenty south or Green Castle Road, between twelve hundred east or the county line to Fallen Rock Road. And that comes up, or ends right there at that bridge where we had all the problems with the guardrail. And that one come in at three ninety four, two seventy, and seventy cents. And the next one is New Discovery Road, that's between Walker Ramp Road, going west to the new blacktop. So it's New Discovery Road or it's Ferndale Road, really. And that can come in at a hundred and five, eight oh seven, twenty. Gives us a grand total of nine hundred and fifty seven thousand two hundred and ninety six dollars and thirty cents.
I couldn't hear all those numbers, but that does include the road past Rocky Foreplate, correct?
Yes, one thousand east, yeah.
One thousand, okay. That's the one I didn't hear.
Okay.
Okay.
We had to drop three fifty north. It come in really high, of course it's a long road too.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's got quite a few miles. Well, we can go up to a million dollars, it's all to go anyway.
Yeah.
So this gets us closer to the billion dollars that we can apply for. Are we good with that even then, do we want, do we have to give a motion, get Randy to go ahead and do that, or we've already done it, haven't we?
Well, not the, not the, the change one, we had to take that three fifty out of that, so we better do with, not include the three fifty.
Okay, well, then I make a motion that we go ahead and approve the list that Randy gave us as far as the roads to put on the application for the crossroads grant.
And I would second that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. What else you got Randy?
That's all I have, if you guys have something more?
Well, that's all I have, Bruce, you got anything?
I do not, we do have one individual, the joint representative here, I don't know if he wants to say anything, or he was just out here to see if we pass the resolution, so give him a, a second here Jim, to, to pass on what he'd like to say.
I just want to express my appreciation for your support of the project. And apologize that it was a little bit worked up at the last meeting. But I'd eaten a bunch of chips and pretzels on my way here, and I think I got my blood pressure about sky high by the time I got here. So, in any case, I, we've been working really hard on the application, it's a really high quality application. We've made a lot of investment in park, we're gonna continue to work really hard to make additional investment in park. I just want you to know how grateful I am for your, for your support of the project. Thank you.
Well, the resolutions are passed, and so hopefully you guys get the applications in this week, and we'll just see what happens with the approval process.
Really appreciate it, thank you.
Hey Jim, Bruce.
Jim, Nick's got something.
The, so the mandate that came down, it was the federal, it was the Family First Coronavirus Response Act was what had been passed, and it was a temporary act that expired at the end of two thousand twenty. There was the COVID act on as far as the paid sick time and things like that, and it's not been renewed, so it's really just up to you at the county level, from what I can tell, as to what you want your policy to be, so.
Okay, then I would agree with Bruce, I think we just go with the normal handbook, because treating like any other, any other disease, I don't know how you pick and choose one disease over another that you're gonna, gonna pay and not pay, so it would just be treated as any other disease and use, use sick days. Is that the way you say it Bruce?
Yeah, I, I think that's, I
Long fair way to do it.
Yeah, I don't, that's, I just don't know how to, how to distinguish. I don't, I don't want to be the judge to decide one employee's illness is worse than somebody else's, because that's not for me to decide, but, you know, we have a policy in place that if you're sick, you get this many days, and if you run out of days, you've got vacation time you can use, and if you run out of that, unfortunately, you I mean, you gotta look at the taxpayer's side as well, I mean, they're being paid out of tax dollars, and, and, you know, if if, if they're out of time, they have to go to no pay. And that's only fair, I think, to the taxpayers' tax dollars that we're receiving to pay them, so I don't think, you know, I don't want people to think that we're being vicious or, or mean to the employees or whatever, it's just, again, I think we all were hoping that this COVID thing was just a short-term thing that would go away, but unfortunately it's not, and it probably never will, and so we've, we've gotta, I think, start moving back to some kind of normalcy with, with our policies.
Yep, I would agree with that, yep. Okay.
Really, we don't need to do anything, our policy's our policy, so.
Yep.
I have one thing.
Okay, Laura's got something.
At the November fifteenth, twenty twenty one meeting, the commissioners did pass an ordinance for twenty twenty one days twelve for, and it was reflected same day, as a same day meeting, for the res, for the ordinance that we just had tonight. And also the council, also we had, I got a resolution written down for twenty twenty one days twelve A for that joint and all that, for the broadband. And, and the council passed that January the thirteenth of twenty twenty two.
Yeah, that's the one they just passed, the A, the A and the B.
So I just show the prior one in twenty twenty one for the commissioners as rescinded, and this one adopted, is how I'd show that in these minutes.
Okay. Nick, you got anything for us?
No, not today, I don't.
Okay, and we're gonna get ready to adjourn here, but if Alice is still there, I'll wait for Alice to send that, that document to me, and I will sign it and scan it and send it right back to her, so we can get that to Bloomingdale, because I think it has to be in in two days, I think, twentieth.
We'll be done.
Okay.
I make a motion. Oh, go ahead.
Okay. You got it, adjourn.
Work out.